Further hearing in the appeal, Fern and others against four of the trustees of Tate Gallery.
Yes, Mr. Ferguson-Hall.
My lords, yesterday I took the court through the first part of our case, that there is no general right not to be overlooked in English law. The second part of our case, although it's numbered three, it starts on paragraph twenty-three, and this is really a development of the first point, that there is no right to be overlooked, even in exceptional circumstances. Now, when I went through the authorities with lordships, drawn mainly from the eighteenth and nineteenth centuries, yesterday, I made two points in particular. The first point was that those cases are simply not confined to what Melanod Friend has called 'mere overlooking'. They include cases where the overlooking caused, or was likely to cause, material intrusion, and I take that from Tappling and Jones. So this is not harmless activity. And the second point that I made was that the affronted, overlooked landowners' only remedy was to, as in Tappling and Jones, put up a wall, or as in Victoria Park, put up a fence, or as we would say in this case, put up net curtains. Now, the appellant's case, as it's now advanced, seems to amount to the proposition that if the overlooking was only mere overlooking, causing but causing material intrusion, there would be no imperative for net curtains. But that where the overlooking becomes more intrusive, then the appellant should not have to suffer net curtains. That approach suggests to us that there are, in the appellant's case, different levels of intrusion with immunity, with at the upper level, a nuisance being caused, and in respect of which the affronted landowner should not have to construct a wall, put up a fence, put up curtains. This differential approach, which depends upon the impact upon immunity, has no support in the authorities at all. And moreover, we say it is unprincipled and illogical to draw a distinction between cases where, on the one hand, there is an intrusion with a material impact on immunity, where your only recourse is to put up a wall, and cases where there is a more material impact, where apparently you don't have to put up a wall, you sue in nuisance instead. And, my lords, the watching and besetting cases which Malanod Friend gave as an example of his, he quotes numerous cases, do not controvert our principle that overlooking is not a tort. They are explicable on the basis that the watching and besetting must be done with a view to compelling a person from doing, or abstaining from doing any particular act which it's lawful for that person to do. Now, in Lyons and Wilkins, which is the principal authority cited on watching and besetting, that's at page seven-nine-five of the bundle, I needn't take your lordships to it again, there were relays of men sent to watch and beset the plaintiff's house. It took place over some months and covered the working hours of the day. And that was all done with the purpose of stopping the plaintiff from using his land. And that is a classic nuisance, it's an interference with the property right. And as the master of the role said in this case, the conduct complained of here simply does not fall within the parameters of the watching and besetting tort. And when he came to discuss Rositi, where Mr. Justice Young in Australia said that surveillance and recording gets sufficiently close to watching and besetting, the master of the role said at paragraph seventy-two that such acts were covered by the nineteen ninety-seven Act in this jurisdiction. And the master of the role has added, it is quite different from just overlooking and what takes place on the Tate's viewing gallery. Now, my lords, I don't seek to trivialise what goes on on the Tate's viewing gallery. I did, yesterday, seek to establish that it was not a case of morning till night, wall to wall, overlooking by five hundred thousand people, and that really came out strongly in the evidence at first instance. But the Court of Appeal said that what was going on on the viewing gallery, photographing, some waving, mainly looking, was not besetting. And according to the classic definition of the phrase watching and besetting, there is, it's just wrong to say that they were wrong about that, there is no finding of any intention here, no finding that the public were spying or doing things on the viewing gallery with a view to causing the occupiers to refrain from doing that which they have a legal right to do. It's still, in effect, overlooking. But if it went further than that, to engage watching and besetting, well, that conduct would now be caught by the nineteen ninety-seven Act, which is precisely what the Court of Appeal said. And before leaving this topic, my lords, can I just deal with the famous Ballam Dentist? An authority nobody's ever been able to find, but which is cited in Professor Winfield's article. Well, that was clearly a case of overlooking. If it amounted to surveillance, and the plaintiff failed on the facts in the Ballam Dentist case apparently, but if it amounted to surveillance, then the nineteen ninety-seven Act would give a remedy. And if it's something less than surveillance, then it's not an offence, and there is no remedy. And, my lords, I don't shrink from the proposition that something that, in common parlance, may be said to be intrusive, or annoying, or something that nobody likes, may not have a remedy. But as Lord Lloyd commented in Hunter, which I'll take your lordships to in just a moment, there are many wrongs which don't have a remedy. And in such cases, it's really not for the court to progress to fill the gap. If there is a call for a remedy, it should be Parliament which does it and debates the matter properly, taking all considerations into account. Can I take your lordships now to Hunter? It's at page four hundred and sixty, and for Melanod Friend's note, it's in the volume one of the bundle of authorities at tab six. Page four hundred and sixty. The headnote is useful, if I can just start by reading that, between letters E and F. There were two actions here, we're not concerned with one of them, which was all about development nuisance caused by dust and so forth. It's the other, which was interference with the reception of television broadcasts. That was allegedly caused by the presence of a building two hundred and fifty metres high and fifty metres square, the Canary Wharf Tower, as it's called. And that was erected by the defendants pursuant to planning permission granted by the Entropy Zone Authority. On the trial of preliminary issues, the judge ruled that interference with television reception was capable of constituting an actionable private nuisance. That to claim private nuisance, it was necessary to have a right to exclusive possession of the property. And there were then appeals and cross appeals, and the Court of Appeal reversed those rulings. And can I invite your lordships' attention now to page four hundred and eighty-eight, and the judgment of Lord Gough. He sets up the facts in rather more detail on page four hundred and eighty-eight. He says, between letters D and E, in the first action, the appellant plaintiffs claim damages in respect of interference with the television reception at their homes. This, they claim, was caused by the construction of the Canary Wharf Tower, built on land developed by the defendants. Then he gives its dimensions. He says, the source of television transmissions in the area is a BBC transmitter at Crystal Palace. The plaintiffs claim that because of its size and the metal in its surface, it has caused interference with the television signals from Crystal Palace. The plaintiffs all lived at the material time in an area on the Isle of Dogs affected by the interference which has been called the Shadow Area. They claim that the interference began in nineteen eighty-nine, during the construction of the tower, and the problem in the end was overcome by the construction of a relay transmitter. But in any event, they sued in nuisance and in negligence, although the negligence claim was abandoned. Then, if I can take your lordships, two pages on, to page four hundred and ninety, still in the opinion of Lord Gough. First paragraph in, between A and B. He says, as I see the present case, there is a more formidable obstacle to this claim. This is that the complaint rests simply upon the presence of the defendant's building on land in the neighbourhood as causing the relevant interference. If I can skip to the next paragraph, between C and D. As a general rule, a man is entitled to build on his own land, though nowadays this right is invariably subject to our system of planning controls. Moreover, as a general rule, a man's right to build on his land is not restricted by the fact that the presence of the building may of itself interfere with his neighbour's enjoyment of his land. The building may spoil his neighbour's view. It may restrict the flow of air onto his neighbour's land. It may take away light from his neighbour's windows. Nevertheless, his neighbour generally cannot complain of the presence of the building, though this may seriously detract from the enjoyment of his land. Then can I skip, after the quotation, to just below letter G? From this, it follows that in the absence of an easement, more is required than the mere presence of a neighbouring building to give rise to an actionable private nuisance. Indeed, for an action in private nuisance to lie in respect of interference with the plaintiff's enjoyment of his land, it will generally arise from something emanating from the defendant's land. Such an emanation may take many forms, noise, dirt fumes, noxious smell, vibrations, and suchlike. Occasionally, activities on the defendant's land are in themselves so offensive to neighbours as to constitute an actionable nuisance, and he cites an authority. And then over leaf, page four hundred and ninety-one at the top, deals with the Thompson-Schrube case, where it was the sight of prostitutes and their clients entering and leaving. Such cases, he says, must however be relatively rare. Then he cites the decision of Mr. Justice Hardy Boyes, the future governor-general of New Zealand, in Bank of New Zealand and Greenwood, a case where the glass roof of a veranda which deflected the sun's rays so that a dazzling glare was thrown onto neighbouring buildings, was held to create a nuisance. It seems that the effect was not merely to reflect the sunlight, but to deflect it at such an angle and in such a manner as to cause the dazzling glare, too bright for the human eye to bear, to shine straight into the neighbouring building. One expert witness explained that the verandaglass diffused the light as if from a multitude of mirrors into what he described as a high intensity dazzle, which was extremely difficult to look at. On that basis, such a case can be distinguished from one concerned with the mere presence of a building on neighbouring land. At all events, the mere fact that a building on the defendant's land gets in the way and so prevents something from reaching the plaintiff's land is, generally speaking, not enough for this purpose. My lords, before leaving Bank of New Zealand and Greenwood, it's not in the bundle unfortunately, but the interesting result in that case was that although the deflection of the rays of light from the defendant's building was held to constitute a nuisance, the remedy the court devised was not for the defendant to rebuild its building, which was what was claimed, replace the cladding, but rather for the claimant to put up blinds in its own property. And, my lords, I'll be returning to that as an eminently common sense solution to problems of that sort where there is a nuisance. But can I just carry on with the judgment of Lord Gough? On the next page, four hundred and ninety-two, under the heading 'right to sue in private nuisance', between letters C and D, he says, I turn next to the question of the right to sue in private nuisance. In the two cases now under appeal, the four your lordships house, one of which relates to interference with television signals and the other to the generation of dust, the plaintiffs consist in each case of a substantial group of local people. They are not restricted to householders who have the exclusive right to possess the places where they live, whether as freeholders or tenants, or even as licensees. They include people with whom householders share their homes, for example, as wives, or husbands, or partners, or as children, or other relatives. All of these people are claiming damages and private nuisance by reason of interference with their television viewing. And then skipping down to just below letter G, the basic position is, in my opinion, most clearly expressed in Professor Newak's classic article on the boundaries of nuisance in nineteen forty-nine, when he stated that the essence of nuisance was that it was a tort to land, or to be more accurate, it was a tort directed against the plaintiff's enjoyment of rights over land. And then there's some learning about the origin of the tort. Perhaps I can invite your lordships' attention over leaf, page four hundred and ninety-three. Still citing from Professor Newak's article, Lord Gough says at letter B, in true cases of nuisance, the interest of the plaintiff which is invaded is not the interest of bodily security, but the interest of liberty to exercise rights over land in the amply manner. A sulfurous chimney in a residential area is not a nuisance because it makes householders cough and splutter, but because it prevents them taking their ease in their gardens. It is for this reason that the plaintiff in an action for nuisance must show some title to reality. And finally, he proclaimed four theses which should be nailed to the doors of the law courts and defended against all comers. The first was that the term nuisance is properly applied only to such actionable user of land as interferes with the enjoyment by the plaintiff of rights in land. A bit more from Lord Gough, my lords, two pages on, page four hundred and ninety-five. He's now dealing with the decision of the Court of Appeal in Corrsangian and Bush, which was effectively overruled by this case. If I can pick it up at letter D, Lord Gough says, the decision in Malone and Lasky on nuisance, that's to say, a person with no interest in land cannot sue, has since been followed in many cases. Recently, however, the Court of Appeal departed from this line of authority in Corrsangian, a case which I must examine with some care, and he does. I won't take your lordships through all of it, but can I ask your lordships to go down to between letters G and H? Where Lord Gough says, it was submitted that the plaintiff is a mere licensee in her mother's house, but not invoke the tort of private nuisance to complain of unwanted and harassing telephone calls made to her and her mother's house. The majority of the Court of Appeal, Miss Justice Peter Gibson dissenting, rejected this submission. Then I can leap a whole page, I think, to page four hundred and ninety-six. Between G and H, Lord Gough says, I must go further. If a plaintiff, such as the daughter of the household in Corrsangian, is harassed by abusive telephone calls, the gravamen of the complaint lies in the harassment which is just as much an abuse, or indeed an invasion of her privacy, whether she is pestered in this way in her mother's or her husband's house, or she is staying with a friend, or is at her place of work, or even in her car with a mobile phone. In truth, what the Court of Appeal appears to have been doing was to exploit the law of private nuisance in order to create by the back door a tort of harassment which was only partially effective, and that it was artificially limited to harassment which takes place in her home. I myself do not consider this as a satisfactory manner in which to develop the law, especially when, as in the case in question, the step so taken was inconsistent with another decision of the Court of Appeal, Malone and Lasky. In any event, a tort of harassment has now received statutory recognition. See the Protection from Harassment Act nineteen ninety-seven. We are therefore no longer troubled with the question whether the common law should be developed to provide such a remedy. And that's the end of Corrsangian. And next paragraph, he says, it follows that, on the authorities as they stand, an action in private nuisance will only lie in the suit of a person who has a right to the land affected. Then on to the next paragraph, but culminating with the statement that mere licensee on the land has no right to sue. And then he goes on, the question therefore arises whether your lordship should be persuaded to depart from established principle and recognise such a right in others who are no more than mere licensees on the land. At the heart of this question lies a more fundamental question which relates to the scope of the law of private nuisance. And then going down a few lines, between F and G, he adds, in any event, it is right for present purposes to regard the typical cases of private nuisance as being those concerned with interference with the enjoyment of land, and as such, generally actionable only by a person with a right in the land. Characteristic examples of cases of this kind are those concerned with noise, vibrations, noxious smells, and the like. The two appeals with which your lordships are here concerned arise from actions of this character. And just a little more from Lord Gough on the next page, page four hundred and ninety-eight. In the middle of the page, immediately below letter C, he says, any such departure from the established law on this subject, such as that adopted by the Court of Appeal in the present case, faces the problem of defining the category of persons who would have the right to sue. The Court of Appeal adopted the not easily identifiable character of those who have a substantial link with the land, regarding a person who occupied the premises as a home as having a sufficient link for this purpose. But who is to be included in this category? It was plainly intended to include husbands and wives, or partners and their children, and even other relatives living with them. But is the category also to include the lodger upstairs, or the au pair girl, or resident nurse caring for an invalid who makes her home in the house while she works there? If the latter, it seems strange that the category should not extend to include places where people work, as well as places where they live, where nuisances such as noise can be just as unpleasant or distracting. In any event, the extension of the tort in this way would transform it from a tort to land into a tort to the person in which damages could be recovered in respect of something less serious than personal injury. And the criteria for liability were founded not upon negligence, but upon striking a balance between the interests of neighbours and the use of their land. This is, in my opinion, not an acceptable way in which to develop the law. And if your lordships will bear with me, I'd like now to go to the judgment of Lord Lloyd, at page five hundred and four. Between B and C, he says, the annoyance caused by the erection of Canary Wharf and the consequence interference with television reception must have been very considerable. But unfortunately, the law does not always afford a remedy for every annoyance, however great. The house owner who has a fine view of the South Downs may find that his neighbour's built serves to obscure his view, but there is no redress unless for chance the neighbour's land was subject to a restrictive covenant in the house owner's favour. It would be a good example of what in law is called damnnum absque inuria, a loss which the house owner has undoubtedly suffered, but which gives rise to no infringement of his legal rights. In the absence of a restrictive covenant, there is no legal right to a view. The analogy between a building which interferes with a view and a building which interferes with television reception seems to me, as it did to the Court of Appeal, to be very close. If one asks the more fundamental questions, why there should be no legal remedy in either case, one is taken back to the observation of Lord Hardwick, Lord Chancellor-in-Artery, Attorney General and Doughty, where he said, I know no general rule of common law which warrants that or says that buildings serve to stop another's prospect as a nuisance. Was that the case, there could be no great towns, and I must grant injunctions to all the new buildings in this town. And, my lords, we say that statement really resonates with the issues that arise in this case. Then, my lords, Lord Hoffman, who's the next judge to give a substantive judgment, page five hundred and seven, under the heading, two-thirds the way down the page, the right to sue, between letters F and G. Perhaps I can pick it up just below G, where he said, up to about twenty years ago, no one would have had the slightest doubt about who could sue. Nuisances are taught against land, including interests in land such as easements and profits. The plaintiff must therefore have an interest in the land affected by the nuisance. And if I can then skip over to page five hundred and twelve, between letters C and D. And, my lords, I'll carry on reading out aloud unless your lordships find that tiresome. Between C and D, he says, there any reason of policy why the rule should be abandoned, this rule about having to have an interest in the land? And he says, once nuisance has escaped the bounds of being a tort against land, there seems no logic in compromise limitations, such as that proposed by the Court of Appeal in this case, requiring the plaintiff to have been residing on land as his or her home. And he refers to Corrsangian. And he goes on, letter E, the development of the common law should be rational and coherent. It should not distort its principles and create anomalies merely as an expedient to fill a gap. Perceived gap in Corrsangian and Bush was the absence of a tort of intentional harassment causing distress without actual bodily or psychiatric illness. Skipping a couple of lines, the law of harassment has now been put on a statutory basis, and it's unnecessary to consider how the common law might have developed. But as of present I advise, I see no reason why a tort of intention should be subject to the rule which excludes compensation for mere distress, inconvenience, or discomfort in actions based on negligence. The policy considerations are quite different. I do not therefore say that Corrsangian and Bush was wrongly decided, but it must be seen as a case on intentional harassment, not nuisance. And still with Lord Hoffman, on page five hundred and fifteen, five lines down. He says, once again, we must consider whether modern conditions require these well-established principles to be modified. The common law freedom of an owner to build upon his land has been drastically curtailed by the Town and Country Planning Act nineteen forty-seven and its successors. It is now, in normal cases, necessary to obtain planning permission. The power of the planning authority to grant or refuse permission, subject to such conditions as it thinks fit, provides a mechanism for control of the unrestricted right to build which can be used for the protection of people living in the vicinity of a development. In a case such as this, where the development is likely to have an impact upon many people over a large area, the planning system is, I think, a far more appropriate form of control from the point of view of both the developer and the public, than enlarging the right to bring actions for nuisance of common law. It enables the issues to be debated before an expert forum at a planning inquiry and gives the developer the advantage of certainty as to what he is entitled to build. In saying this, I'm not suggesting that a granted planning commission should be a defence to anything which is an actionable nuisance under the existing law. It would, I think, be wrong to allow the private rights of third parties to be taken away by a permission granted by the planning authority to the developer. The Court of Appeal rejected such an argument in this case, and the point has not been pursued in your lordship's house. But when your lordships are invited to develop the common law by creating a new right of action against an owner who erects a building upon his land, it is relevant to take into account the existence of other measures by which the interests of the locality can be protected. And then I'll just read from the next paragraph. In this case, as I mentioned at the beginning of this speech, the normal protection offered to the community by the Act of nineteen seventy-one, which was largely removed. Parliament authorised this to be done on the ground that the national interest required the rapid regeneration of the Docklands urban development area. The plaintiffs may well feel that their personal convenience was temporarily sacrificed to the national interest, but this is not a good enough reason for changing the principles of the law of nuisance which apply throughout the country. And, my lords, if I may say so, this therefore is a very good example of a case of something which clearly was a considerable annoyance to the affected householders, but in respect of which the House of Lords said, there is no remedy in this case. Although ultimately, the relay transmitter which was introduced resolved the problem. The last judge I'd like to read from, I think Melanod Friend having cited from Lord Cook, who dissented in part, is Lord Hope, at page five hundred and twenty-eight.
Sorry, page again?
Five hundred and twenty-eight, my lord. So the start of his opinion on page five hundred and twenty-eight, just above B. He says, my lords, the issues which are before us, and these two actions are, I believe, best examined from the standpoint of principle. The word nuisance is difficult to define precisely. It has been said to be protean when questions are raised as to the conduct which may give rise to liability. But the underlying principles which distinguish the tort of nuisance from the tort of negligence, for example, are, I think, capable of reasonably precise definition in the light of the authorities. Once those principles are appreciated, it should be relatively easy to identify those who have a right to sue for a remedy in private nuisance, and those who have not. A principled approach is also the best guide to the right answer to the question whether an actionable nuisance has been demonstrated in the television action. It is tempting to depart from principle out of sympathy for the plaintiffs, or in search of a remedy for some objectionable activity. But in this area of the law, it is important to resist the temptation and to rely instead on the guidance of principle. To do otherwise would risk confusion and be likely to lead to uncertainty in the development of the law, as the point would ultimately be reached when each case would have to be determined entirely on its own facts. The tort of nuisance is an invasion of the plaintiff's interests in possession and enjoyment of land. It is closely linked to the law of property, and is often regarded as part of the law of neighbourhood. And then skipping over the reference to Scots law, because it doesn't apply in this particular case, to letter F, he continues, in my opinion, the English approach as disclosed by the authorities serves to emphasise the point that we are concerned here essentially with the law of property. The function of the tort in the context of private nuisance is to control the activities of the owner or occupier of property within the boundaries of his own land, which may harm the interests of the owner or occupier of other land. And going on, my lords, to my last citation on page five hundred and thirty. Still with Lord Hope. New paragraph between C and D. He says, in my opinion, the decision in Corisangian is open to criticism because the majority who adopted the same approach as that taken in Motherwell, Canadian case, a decision which, I think with respect, is equally flawed on this ground, failed to apply the general rule of law noted by Mr Justice Peter Gibson, that only an owner or occupier of the property affected can maintain an action for private nuisance. The interlocutory order, and then can I skip five lines, reading on just below letter E, which contained language, so he said, its use of language, i.e. in the interlocutory order, demonstrates that the case was concerned with the invasion of the privacy of the plaintiff's person, not the invasion of any interests which he might have had in any land. I would be uneasy if it were not possible by some other means to provide such a plaintiff with a remedy. But the solution to her case ought not to have been found in the tort of nuisance, as her complaint of the effect on her privacy of the defendant's conduct was of a kind which fell outside the scope of the tort. My lords, I'm sorry to take up so much time reading those extracts from Hunter, but in our submission, it's absolutely fundamental to a proper understanding of why it is that the appellant's cannot and should not recover in this case. So to summarise some of the points emerging from Hunter. Nuisance protects property rights. It does not protect against harm just because that harm takes place on property. And in considering what is the harm here, the Court of Appeal rightly said in paragraph eighty-four, that the issue is not damage to a property right, it is invasion of privacy. And by that phrase, invasion of privacy, we mean that the people inside the property, whoever they might be, feel that their personal space has been invaded. The harm caused by an invasion of privacy is injury to personal feelings, distress, humiliation, feeling affronted. Melon and Friends said, well, there's no difference with dust. You can say that dust makes someone splutter and sneeze. But that's a nuisance because it's the fact that the land is rendered less useful by the dust that causes it to be an invasion of a property right. The essence of a privacy complaint is really injury to a person's feelings. And that cannot be turned into a harm to land, because the essence of the complaint about an invasion of privacy is not that the immunity of one's land is damaged. The complaint is, I feel upset that someone can see me if I don't draw my net curtains at certain times of the day.
How does that differ, for example, from the sight of the prostitutes coming and going across the road? Presumably found to be offensive to the people in the property?
Yes, my lord, I have-
It's not dust getting in their eyes, although I don't really see why that should differ, or sound being uncomfortable, or smell being annoying? What's the fundamental difference here?
My lord, I have difficulty answering your lordship's questions, entirely fair. My submission is that that's purely an anomaly, that decision. It didn't affect the access to the land, it didn't affect the plaintiff's immunity on the land, but nevertheless, plainly, the judge thought that, in this case, where the sympathy ought to be translated into the finding of a remedy. And, my lord, it's a hard case, in my submission, that makes bad law.
I mean, it wasn't, forgive me for interrupting, but it wasn't treated as an anomaly in Hunter, where the lords were going out of their way to identify anomalies.
Yes. My lord, I accept that. What do you, Lord, give me? My lord, nevertheless, if my complaint is that my privacy is invaded because I'm in my home, what we really mean by that is that your home is a personal zone which I expect to be protected. The concept of one's home is not limited to ownership of property. The focus in privacy, especially under Article Eight, is on the legitimate expectation of the individual, and that should not be linked with ownership or the right to exclusive possession of land. Haroun Kazi, which we refer to in paragraph thirty-eight of our case, says that the Article Eight respect for home is about dignity as a human and not a property-based right. And we've drawn examples in our case, from paragraph thirty-eight onwards, of those without a property interest, who nevertheless felt a grievance in this case. So the example of Mr McFadyen, one of the appellant's, but not his son, who had no property interest, or a neighbour having dinner with another neighbour. If we try to treat the privacy invasion which takes place in the home as an injury to land, it becomes extremely difficult, given the objective nature of the test for nuisance, because the harm is by nature personal and subjective. Different people value privacy differently and for different reasons. And unlike vibrations, dirt, smells, dust, it is very difficult to apply an objective standard. Notwithstanding what Melon and Friend told you, lordships, yesterday, that there is a way, for example, of measuring noise nuisance, that's what decibels are for. Of course, noise affects different people in different ways, but it's easy to measure a noise intrusion objectively, and the same with dust, and the same with vibration. But privacy is quite different. It creates no physical harm to the land. There is no physical manifestation of the interference which causes the land to be less usable. My lords, my next-
It's not just the volume of noise, though, that you can complain about, it depends on the nature of the noise, for example.
How intermittent.
And the frequency and things like that. So there's no objective test of what's a noise nuisance. It depends ultimately on the judgement about whether it's the kind and volume and frequency, et cetera, of noise that a reasonable person should have to put up with, or a normal person.
My lord, I entirely accept that point. There is a vast amount of literature on precisely your lordship's point as to the frequency of which noise occurs, and whether three beeps a minute is an acceptable level of noise frequency to put up with compared to ten beeps a minute. There is a huge amount of literature on the subject, my lord. So I accept that ultimately, a valid judgement has to be applied, but nevertheless, it's at least measurable in the first place, and invasion of privacy isn't. And Melon and Friend, Mr Fitzgerald, points me to the fact that statutory nuisance has noise standards. So, my lord, it's quite different with these measurable nuisances. It's easy to say how much there has been. Of course, that then has to be evaluated, but there are criteria against which the evaluation is to be carried out. My lords, I move on now. I'm at paragraph forty-four of our case, which is headed, can and should privacy rights ever be directly protected by nuisance? And Melon and Friend, Mr Weeks, places a lot of store in the article by Professor Winfield, which your lordships find at page two thousand two hundred and thirty-one. It's in volume six of the authorities bundle for Melon and Friend's note at tab sixty-three.
I'm sorry, could you give me the page number again?
My lord, yes, two, two, three, one.
Thank you.
My lords, if I can say this without sounding offensive, Professor Winfield, writing this in nineteen sixty-three-one, was a man on a mission. His mission was to establish that a right of privacy should be accommodated within the law of nuisance. And the springboard for his article was the decision of the Court of Appeal in Tully and Frye in nineteen thirty. So he mentions that right at the outset of his article on page two, two, three, one. And in Tully and Frye, there was a dispute of a defamatory nature. One can see that from the first few lines of the article. And there was an offensive cartoon, there was some doggerel verse, and the plaintiff took against all of that. So off it went, from first instance to the Court of Appeal. If I can take your lordships to page two, two, three, two, where Professor Winfield starts analysing privacy, and whether the law of tort should be recast so as to accommodate within nuisance a right to privacy. Two thirds of the way down that page, he asks, he poses this question. The main question then is, how far can one person restrain another from invading the privacy of land which he occupies, where such invasion does not involve actual entry onto the land? And he goes on from having posed that question to, if I can pick up, page twenty-two, forty-seven. A third of the way down that page. He says, we have said that the House of Lords is perhaps the only judicial body which can set the matter right. They might do so in either of two ways. First, they might hold the wrong to be defamation, as did Lord Justice Scrutton, the dissentient Lord Justice in Tully's case. The defendants had not a particle of defence, except that the innuendo was not made out. And if a case of this type were fought to the House of Lords, that tribunal would do no violence to any previous decision of their own if they held the defendant liable for defamation. Alternatively, and preferably, they might hold the defendant's act to be a tort sui generis, offensive invasion of personal privacy, preferably because the law defamation is really inadequate to cope with the situation. Now, that's, in effect, Professor Winfield's attempt to coax the House of Lords into deciding an appeal from Tully and Frye. The attempt failed. The Law Lords devised a remedy in defamation for the plaintiff, and Professor Winfield's attempt to have the law of nuisance recast to include a complaint of this type within it, an intrusion of privacy, did not succeed. And ever since that article, my lords, English legal writers have looked to Parliament rather than to the courts for initiative in this field. But even given that background, Professor Winfield does not suggest that nuisance provides the best fit for the development of privacy rights. He considers how far one can best restrain another from invading the privacy of land which he occupies. That was the question which he posed, which I read out to you, lordships, earlier. But he then answers his own question by positing trespass as adequate where there is actual entry. And then when he comes to deal with nuisance without trespass, he says, more expeditious remedies exist on the criminal side. So ultimately, he doesn't even himself advance the proposition that privacy should cover, privacy should be covered within the law of nuisance. He, of course, covers the Ballam dentist case, because that's how we know about that case. He notes that the case is worthless in authority. He does go on to ask, why should it not have been actionable as a nuisance? But when he comes to analyse it, he says, well, it's very like watching and besetting, which is what I suggested to you, lordships, was the right analysis. And having said all of that, Professor Winfield, as it were, supports us in the approach that we take, when he says at the top of page twenty-two, thirty-six, I don't think I need to take your lordships to it, he says, neither at law nor in equity will a court interfere to prevent a landowner from opening new windows which command a view of his neighbour's premises. So despite the weight put on that article by Melon and Friends, it doesn't get them home. So it continues to be the case, my lords, that the courts have so far refused to formulate a general principle of invasion of privacy. And then another article we cite in paragraph fifty of our case, it's not in the bundle, my lords, but I've quoted from it quite extensively. Lords, I'm sorry to give you the page number.
Page one, two, one.
I'm so grateful, my lord, yes, one, two, one. Now, there are two articles by Professor Nolan. One is in the bundle of authorities before you, lordships. This one isn't, it's written much more recently, in the light of the decision of the Court of Appeal in this case. As Professor Nolan says, the Court of Appeal's forthright decision that the construction or alteration of premises so as to provide the means to overlook neighbouring land is not actionable in nuisance is to be welcomed. Some commentators have sought valiantly to explain the exclusion of certain kinds of interference with the use and enjoyment of land from the ambit of private nuisance in terms of some broader principle, usually in an attempt to reconcile the law with some pet economic or philosophical theory. An example is the suggestion that nuisance is limited to physical invasions of the claimant's land, or which amounts to much the same thing, to emanations from the defendant's, an idea dismissed by Mr Justice Mann at first instance. However, as the Court of Appeal recognised, the justification for rules such as this is essentially pragmatic. Put simply, there was little to be gained by extending the law of nuisance to encompass interference of privacy, and potentially a great deal to be lost. Now, as far as pragmatism is concerned, the Court of Appeal drew attention to the range of problems that might arise were the law to recognise a right not to be overlooked, and or merged into a law concerning privacy into the law of nuisance. That's in paragraph eighty-one of their judgement. And I summarise what they said as follows. First, at what point does the activity of overlooking become so exceptionable as to be actionable? Now, my learned friend, yesterday, in answer to a question from one of your lordships, said that a café on the tenth floor of the Tate Modern extension would not be objectionable, even a café situated on the south side, I imagine him to have meant, overlooking the appellant's flats. But I imagine he would also say that if those sitting down, having a cup of coffee in this café, were equipped with binoculars and spent the whole time while sipping their coffee staring at the appellant's flats, that would be exceptional. But at what stage does one draw the line? It's not like dust. Does one say one pair of binoculars but no more? Does one say thirty people but no more? It becomes a very, very difficult value judgment, quite unlike that faced by the courts when considering whether a noise problem is a nuisance. And can I, it's not in the bundle, but can I just draw your lordships' attention to the judgment of Lord Newberger in a case called Manchester City Council against Pinnock in two thousand and ten? The reference is two thousand and ten UKSC forty-five. He warned there of the imprecision inherent in introducing an exceptionality test in the first place. I'll just read aloud if I may. He said, it is necessary to address the proposition that it will only be, in quotes, 'very highly exceptional cases', close quotes, that it will be appropriate for the court to consider a proportionality argument. It seems to us to be both unsafe and unhelpful to invoke exceptionality as a guide. It is unhelpful because, as Lady Hale pointed out in her argument, exceptionality is an outcome and not a guide. And it is unsafe because, as Lord Walker observed in Dirty in Birmingham, there may be more cases than the European Court of Human Rights or Lord Bingham suppose where Article Eight could reasonably be invoked by a residential tenant. Now, a different sort of case, my lords, but the warning of Lord Newberger, I commend to your lordships as being rightly targeted, especially in a case like this, where my learned friend is seeking to bring invasion of privacy within the scope of the tort. So that's the, that's the first point, which really goes to exceptionality and how do you judge that? The second point is the point which comes out strongly from Hunter. What class of persons can sue? And I don't think I need to say any more about that. The third point I've really made, unlike noise or dust, which are measurable at least, even if you still have to evaluate them, how do you measure the point at which overlooking becomes actionable? How do you even detect it without having a trial involving two days of video evidence, as we did in this case, although ultimately none of that was conclusive? How do you tell at what subject a phone camera is pointed? What if the purpose of the photographer is merely to record the architecture of the building? And as Mr Justice Mann said in paragraph two hundred and fifteen of his judgment, overlooking is just not in the same category as nuisance from noise and dust. He said, and I quote, privacy is a bit different, susceptibilities and tastes differ. And my lords, can I just at this stage quote from paragraph fifty-five of our case? Your lordships wouldn't mind me reading this out. We say there, it would be dangerous to introduce exceptions which would depart from the current law and risk making it uncertain and unprincipled. An example of the courts manipulating the law of nuisance in a hard case so as to remedy a situation for which it didn't provide is provided by the decision in Corrisandian. That decision was effectively reversed by the House of Lords in Hunter. And then there's a quotation from Lord Hoffman, but I think I've read that art and needn't read it again. So, my lords, that concludes our analysis from the whole of part one of our case. And I move on now, if I may, to part two, why the law, English law of nuisance as it stands, should not be changed, in particular to create a right of privacy from overlooking. And the reason we say that is because there are existing controls and they suffice. And the first obvious existing control, which Lord Hoffman drew attention to in Hunter, is the planning system. That's a far better medium of controlling inappropriate overlooking than an extension of the common law of nuisance. Now, of course, planners get it wrong. And in this case, there was a suggestion on the evidence that the planners had failed to take overlooking into account in granting permission for the viewing gallery. Whether, having taken into account the overlooking, it would have made any difference at all to the planner's decision is, of course, a moot point. But it's quite wrong in my submission for my learned friends to say that because the planning system did not help them here, there should be some other recourse for them. If anything, what this case demonstrates is that the, is that there was a failure of the planners to take overlooking into account. But in every other respect, the planning system should be an effective control. The law should not be changed on account of one failure. Making overlooking actionable would prompt litigation rivaling boundary disputes as a fertile source of dispute between disgruntled neighbours. Now, your lordships aren't on the whole burdened with boundary disputes. They are dealt with at first instance and occasionally in the Court of Appeal. And on every single occasion in the Court of Appeal, that court expresses its severe irritation with the immense amount of money spent on protecting six inches of land. Well, my lords, that would be as nothing, I suggest, compared to the waste of money and resources if nuisance were to include invasion of privacy. So the planning system, first obvious system of control. The second is the existing privacy laws. And the master role summarised all of those in paragraph eighty-four of his judgment. Confidentiality, misuse of private information, data protection, harassment, stalking. So those are all effective controls. And then the last control, restrictive covenants. If you cannot achieve satisfactory contractual control when you buy your property, then, I hope it won't sound offensive to say, well, the remedy is not to buy that property, but to buy somewhere else where you can. And it is notable that the upper tribunal of the lands chamber, when asked to discharge restrictive covenants under section eighty-four of the Law Property Act nineteen twenty-five, take overlooking and privacy into account. So, lordships may or may not be familiar with the vast web of restrictive covenants which control land use in England and Wales. There are millions and millions of them. And that's a very, very important and effective way of controlling privacy rights. So that's the third system of control which assists those who want to safeguard their right of privacy. Now, I move from that, my lords, to the post-nineteen thirty-one case law, and I covered a little of this yesterday. Let me just summarise the points that we make in paragraphs sixty-three to seventy-five of our case as follows. The Canadian decisions were resorted to by my learned friend. And the comment that I made yesterday was that they are all at state level and they would have been, their outcomes would have been accommodated in this jurisdiction under the existing laws relating to privacy without needing any manipulation of the tort of nuisance. And they all distinguish between simple overlooking, even staring, as in the Levine case, which is not actionable, and overlooking amounting to deliberate surveillance or spying, which is actionable, not as part of the law of nuisance, there is no need for that, we submit, but under the various statutes which have been designed to prevent that activity. And in that context, I remind you, lordships, that Mr Justice Mann said in paragraph one-nine-seven of his judgment, that the purpose of the viewing gallery was not to enable the interiors of the flats to be viewed. This was not therefore a case of snooping. But even if the Canadian cases are correct, they would not compel a different result in this case. And then, my lords, the Australian authorities I took your lordships to yesterday, Victoria Park, no nuisance held. Reciti held a nuisance, but the same result could have been reached on other grounds without resorting to the law of nuisance. So that deals with the authorities. The third, heading three in this part of our case, the English law of nuisance should not be changed to accommodate the human right to privacy. My learned friend, Miss McCollgan, will deal with in due course, so I'll carry on and give way to her later. Part three of our case is headed the modern principles of nuisance. And my lords, I'll take this quickly. First heading, what constitutes an actionable interference? And this is dealt with in paragraphs ninety-seven to one hundred and seven. They examine the proposition that conduct which is deliberate and malicious is automatically a nuisance. And, my lords, we don't agree with that. We think the following points are worth reiterating by way of summary. First, and this is our paragraph one hundred, the test is, and there's no dispute about that, that what objectively a normal person would find it reasonable to have to put up with? Not a subjective test, it's an objective one. That comes from Barr and Biffa and from Lawrence and Fen Tigers. Whether, secondly, whether the defendant is malicious in its activity should be completely irrelevant, because the test is an objective one. Now, we accept it's likely to be the case that malicious activity is not the sort of activity that a normal person should have to put up with, but that's a separate point. And then third, the authorities on malicious activity can probably all be understood on the basis that the activity is simply not a reasonable use, or it's not simply not an activity that a normal person would find it reasonable to have to put up with. And then, my lords, to back this up, can I refer you to what Professor Connor Geerty calls a doctrine of doubtful origin and dubious value? And we set out the relevant part of his article at page one hundred and one of our case. So he's been discussing the proposition that malicious activity is automatically a nuisance. And he says, well, effectively that's wrong. And we respectfully agree with him and commend that to your lordships. Now, when I conceded in front of Mr Justice Mann, as I had to because of the authorities against me, that malicious activity was a nuisance and that that was therefore an exception in my case, Mr Justice Mann said that that gave the game away at the point of principle. And, my lord, it needn't do if your lordships simply recast the law of nuisance as it should be by saying that an inquiry into the mind of the nuisance causer as to whether that person is being malicious or not simply has no role to play. It's illogical because the test is an objective one. My lords, I move on now to paragraphs one hundred and eight to one hundred and twelve, under the heading, the Court of Appeals should have held that no nuisance had been established in this case irrespective of the points of principle raised above. So the submissions I'm about to make are supportive of Mr Justice Mann's approach to the case. And can I preface my remarks by instanting a few points? First, the obvious point, which your lordships don't need making, it is notorious that the appellants here occupy largely glass-walled flats. But there were, and this is important, two respects in which the transparency of the structure was designed to be ameliorated. Now, the first respect concerns the winter gardens. And can I take your lordships to what Mr Justice Mann said about the winter gardens on page two thousand three hundred and one? Sorry, page two hundred and thirty-L. Where your lordships should find paragraph two hundred and eight of his judgment. So near the bottom of the page, just underneath letter H on page two hundred and thirty-L, the judge says, the winter gardens also have to be considered. A very material part of the perceived intrusion into privacy comes from the fact that the occupiers can be viewed in the winter gardens, which they treat as an extension of their living accommodation. Furthermore, the glass of the winter gardens allows a view to the glass of the internal double-glazed door, which in turn allows a further view into the living accommodation. And he goes on in two hundred and nine. Those areas, the winter gardens, were not originally intended as part of the living accommodation. The planning documents make clear that they were conceived as a formal, as a form of internal balconies, which the occupiers could enjoy as an additional amenity to their living accommodation. The experts both agreed on that. That is why the areas were single-glazed and not double-glazed. The flooring was also intended to be different to reflect that. They were not intended to be heated, although the developers did actually extend the underfloor heating into them. Had the occupiers operated their flats in that way, i.e. as effectively conservatories or internal balconies, then they could have expected less privacy in respect of that part of their flats. One does not expect so much privacy in a balcony, even one as high as these. I agree with Mr Rhodes's evidence to that effect.
Yeah, and he makes, in the next sentence, links this to the point that he's made earlier at paragraph two oh five, where he is drawing, he draws an analogy with the earlier cases about people who use their land for particularly sensitive, in ways that are particularly sensitive to intrusion which would normally be easier to cope with.
My lord, indeed. So he's coupling the two, that's absolutely right. And, my lords, I'll come back to that special sensitivity in a later part of my submissions. Now, just to put a picture to the words, can I ask your lordships to go to the plan This shows the Tate Modern new structure with its viewing gallery on top as the black odd shape in the middle of the page. And then the four blocks are shown with a red outline to the southeast. And the block that we're concerned with in this litigation is the one at the top. So one can see the apex to the left-hand side of each block, and that's where the winter gardens are. So they are the point which is the closest to the Tate Modern extension. And then, perhaps slightly more helpfully, one can also see the winter gardens in the photograph, although lots of them, but the best for my purposes is the photograph at page two hundred and fifty-eight. page two hundred and fifty-eight. If your Lordships have that, that's quite a good photograph, it's taken in the living accommodation, and it's a view. If your Lordships have in the middle of the page the blue circular carpet, that's within the winter gardens, along with the two chairs and the table between them. And coming forward into the living accommodation, one sees a black line across the floor, whether your Lordships have that, that's the divider between the winter gardens and the rest of the living accommodation. So one can see very readily from that photograph that the winter gardens themselves have absolutely no protection against the inward gaze, and not merely that, but there's no obstacle between the winter gardens and the living accommodation either. There is no curtain or anything of that nature drawn across that black line.
Is that a sliding door?
No, I think they, there are doors, certainly, my Lord. I don't think they slide, I think they latch together. Because I can't remember, we all went on the view and would have known the answer to that.
I mean, they can't be hinged if it's got a curve on it.
It hasn't got a curve on it, my Lord, I think that's some...
Ah, I see.
Yes, we think they are hinged, there's some, a better photograph at two hundred and fifty-seven, which shows the hinges.
Right. It looks as though the photograph's been taken with a fish eye lens, which is why it looks curved.
That's right, that's right. Now, a point I should make about these photographs, they are of excellent quality. They were prepared for the purposes of this litigation using a professional photographer with a very, very high-value camera, and they are in sharp contrast to many of the other images. So many of these were taken in that way, and not photography remotely representative in the submission I made to Mr Justice Mann of the normal run-of-the-mill camera phone photography. But my Lords, that's the view looking out at two hundred and fifty-eight. And then, one has the view coming, so your Lordships can see the viewing gallery itself, of course, in the background. The view the other way is probably best illustrated by the photograph at page two hundred and eighty-nine. So your Lordships get a sense from this photograph, well, first, one can see the enormous diagonal exoskeleton, which is one of the features that make this building so attractive to architectural students. But the winter gardens, one really gets the sense from this photograph, really are at the apex of the building and have no protection at all to the inward gaze. So all those windows on the right, that doesn't mean to say that protection can't be provided, of course, but these parts of the accommodation are, as it were, much more visible to those on the viewing gallery. And looking as a comparator to the left-hand side of the photographs, Lordships have some examples of the types of obstruction to the inward gaze which the living accommodation has compared to the winter garden. So, for example, all the brown rectangles are the wooden louvers which the developer itself had installed as part of its construction work. In addition to that, though, one can see a curtain of some sort, I don't know whether it's a net curtain, but very near the middle of the cross of the two diagonals. So it's the second flat down, it's actually flat nineteen oh one, and one sees a curtain of some sort. So that flat has the advantage of a curtain and a wooden louver protecting the gaze into the living accommodation. And there are other examples of steps which were taken. Perhaps a better photograph showing the wooden louvers is the one at page two hundred and sixty-three. And I don't want to weary your Lordships with this.
Two eight eight shows them.
Two six three.
Two eight eight shows them.
Oh, yes. My Lords, I had two six, yes, there are lots which illustrate the point. Two six three is better for my purposes, my Lord, because I've marked up my copy. That shows a lot of the flats, I think all the flats belonging to the appellants. And here, one can see more of the non-winter garden interiors, that's to say, the living accommodation, but one can also see the pattern of the wooden louvers. One can see that quite a lot of the blinds are down, that's the white rectangles that are presented. And then, the point I had been making, that much more of the winter gardens are on view, and that, as the judge held, is the principal area of interest.
You also see in that photograph what a remarkable-looking building it is.
Yes.
It's rather like a Lloyd's building, of course, by the same architect.
Yes, yes. And your Lordship may recall the point I made yesterday about the Instagram posts, where the majority of the comments were about the Richard Rogers design. Very, very few, I mean, there's one reference, I think, to a Goldfish bowl, and how can you live like that, but very, very few are to do with privacy. And there's quite a helpful summary of the comments in the bundle. So wooden louvers. And now, can I take your Lordships to, in connection with the wooden louvers, to the experts' joint statement at page three hundred and fifty-three?
I do beg your pardon, which page again? Three five.
Three five three, my Lord. It starts at three hundred and fifty. I should invite your Lordships' attention first to page three hundred and fifty-two, where the two experts' agreed views are recorded, and they're talking in paragraph sixteen about the winter gardens. And then, in nineteen, and this is really where the judge drew his conclusions from, the winter gardens are single-glazed and thermally isolated from the flats by bifold double-glazed doors, and so on, I don't think I need to go through that again. And then, at twenty, rooms within the flat themselves commonly supplement the screening effect of their louvered and solid panels with blinds and curtains. The winter gardens are different, and while all benefit from solar blinds, which can be lowered electronically, no other privacy measures have been installed by any of the claimants in their winter gardens. So that's that. And then, over the page three five three, the experts in their, so this is all agreed, referred at paragraph twenty-seven to the approved drawings, which were put forward in support of the planning application by native land. The approved drawings include two plans which demonstrate the broad types of facing materials, including privacy screen walls and louvers, as well as typical details of how they could be arranged on the top floors, and so on. The drawings are listed as approved in the planning commission and are reproduced in appendix nine to Mr Rhodes's report. I'm not sure whether your Lordships can keep a digital finger in that page, so I'll take your Lordships in a moment to another page which shows those approved drawings. But can I just draw your Lordships' attentions at the comments here? On those drawings, it's relevant to note, there is a significant effect of screening to the flats, shown in the form of solid or timber-louvered panels. The extent of screening to other rooms is in contrast to the winter gardens, which were shown with full-height, single-glazing and no screening, and so forth. And then, in twenty-eight, the experts say, given that planning permission was granted in accordance with these two approved drawings, any subsequent details implemented in the development should also have been in accordance with the broad types of privacy measure and typical arrangements shown there. Now, that, of course, never happened, the reason why it never happened is a mystery. That is to say, the extent of the screening in the form of solid or timber-louvered panels disappeared to a great extent. And that's recorded in paragraph forty-three of Mr Justice Mann's judgment at page two hundred. At page two hundred, paragraph forty-three, he says, what ultimately happened was that drawings were submitted and approved which did not contain the louvers, apparently appearing on glass elements in the preceding application. There is some louvering apparent, but it is decorative wooden panels over solid structural panes. And here's the sentence, thus any proposals which might have involved creating privacy from form of structure disappeared without comment. So the photographs I've shown, your Lordships, are the less screened actuality. I won't take your Lordships to the plans, because they're not very good photocopies, but the plans show something really quite different. The other extract from the judge's judgment, I'd like to take your Lordships to, is at page two hundred and thirteen, it's linked to this point. Yes, my Lords, I'm sorry, I've lost the reference, but what he actually said, and we record this in our case, was that the appellants could have, but did not, adopt reasonable protective measures by lowering their solar blinds, installing privacy film or net curtains. But I've shown you, Lordships, the photographs which do show that some of the residents, presumably other residents, have installed blinds, one can see them in their lowered position. Some of them, some of them, in addition to that, have installed net curtains, and I showed you, Lordships, the picture where that appears to be the case at page two hundred and eighty-nine. Some of them appear to have installed curtains across the back of their winter gardens. And an example of that comes from a photograph of one of the appellants' flats at page four hundred and eight. My Lords, the photograph shown on page four hundred and eight comes from an article in The Mail on Sunday. The curtain to which I've just referred is that diagonal white thing which one sees going between the two red struts. So one's looking here at the winter gardens in one of the flats. The cardboard cutouts displaying underwear have the faces on them of Sir Nicholas Sirota, his wife and his daughter. And Lords, one might say, by way of comment on this photograph, that this is an entirely separate means by which the appellants, or some of them, attract the inward gaze of those on the viewing platform. I think these cardboard cutouts were there for three weeks, and undoubtedly, they will not have helped the appellants' privacy. Indeed, The Mail on Sunday turned up and took their photographs of this and then splashed it all over their pages. And my Lords, this links into an entirely separate point to do with the outbursts on social media, the connection with those, and publicity given to the latest predicament as they saw it. So whenever an article was published, social media then went mad for a few days. And we say, that's not the Tate's fault, that's all down to the publicity given to this problem by those who live in the flats and complain about the problem.
The remedial steps that the judge identified are conveniently perhaps drawn together at paragraph two hundred and fourteen on page two hundred and thirty M.
Yes, my Lord. Yes, my Lord, that's right. And my Lords, in our case, paragraph one hundred and thirty, we comment in this connection that although there were these perfectly obvious and sensible protective steps that could have been taken during the seven and a half hours each day for five days a week that the viewing gallery is open, that the appellants choose not to draw their blinds or put up net curtains. We hazard quite sensible reason for that, namely, they wish to be able to access their view at all times, we say that in paragraph one hundred and thirty of our case. That's likely to be the truth of it, and of course, there is no right to a view. So what the appellants are effectively doing is saying, we want to be able to look out at the world, but not to have you looking in on us. So on the cardboard cutout page, my Lords, the point that I was making was that it is quite possible to have a net curtain or some form of curtain going all the way across the back of the winter gardens, along the line of that divider. And that, of course, screens off the rest of the living accommodation from the winter gardens. So perfectly feasible solution, which appears one of the appellants did adopt. Now, in this connection, my Lords, I should add that there is, there was a weak attempt by the appellants to assert that it's all very well saying, put up curtains, but the landlord, native land, would not allow them. Well, my Lords, that's not right. Page three hundred and seventy-three of the bundle, which I have taken, your Lordships, to, the experts' joint statement, records at Roman eight, the Tate's expert saying, as far as I'm aware, none of the claimants have requested consent to install blinds.
Thirteen, I think.
Three seven three, my Lord.
No, I mean, I think it's Roman thirteen.
I think your Lordships are quite right. Yes, I'm so sorry. So Mr Rhodes saying, as far as I'm aware, none of the claimants have requested consent to install blinds. The developer of Neo Bankside has indicated that they would grant consent to residents who wish to install additional blinds if an application was made. That's blinds, I appreciate the point I was making was about net curtains, but it's difficult to see how the developer could reasonably refuse its consent to that. And Mr May, the expert for the claimants, agreed with that proposition. So it's not right to say, well, we wouldn't be allowed to install blinds. My Lords, I move on to paragraphs one hundred and eight to one hundred and twelve of our case, still dealing with the judgment of Mr Justice Mann. So he said that there was no nuisance in this case because the appellants occupy particularly sensitive property in a sensitive way, that's paragraph two hundred and five of his judgment. And he adds to that, that the appellants invite the overlooking by failing to take the obvious, inexpensive, reasonable and non-intrusive measures to protect their privacy which are available to them. That's paragraph two hundred and fifteen, which my Lord, Lord Kitchen referred to earlier. Now, the Court of Appeal took issue with three matters. First, the lack of any finding of necessity for the viewing gallery use, which would have been fatal had the overlooking activity been actionable. Secondly, the reliance by the judge upon the sensitivity of the flats. And third, the reliance by the judge upon the remedial measures that the appellants could have taken. And I'll deal with each of those points very quickly, one by one. First, the absence of a finding that Tate's use of its land was necessary, and this is paragraphs one hundred and thirteen to one hundred and nineteen of our case. This links back to the famous judgment in Bamford. The act must be necessary for the common and ordinary use of land. And my Lords, in my submission, London Friends, in a great deal of difficulty trying to apply this test here, in Bamford, of course, the fact that the brick burning was held not to be an activity necessary for the common and ordinary use of land was not based upon the fact that the bricks were being baked in a brick works, was based upon the fact that the householder was, as it were, indulging in an ad hoc brick baking exercise just for his own house. So it obviously wasn't necessary in that case for that householder to be burning bricks. It was probably vastly incongruous in that area for that activity to be carried on. Translating that test, though, to the facts of this case is an extremely difficult one. London Friends seems to accept that office and residential use is a necessary use for these purposes. these purposes. Indeed, he went so far as to accept that a café on the 10th floor of the Tate Modern Extension would itself not be an objectionable use. Now, it's difficult to see why that might be the case compared to a viewing gallery not satisfying the test. So if the relevant question is, is use of the viewing gallery necessary to the common and ordinary use of the structure as such? The answer could hardly be, no. It is the planner's policy in this area to encourage viewing galleries on the top of tall buildings. And that's plain from the Experts' Joint Statement at page 367. 367, Roman 10 in the middle of the page. Mr Rhodes says, it is an important objective of planning policy to encourage public views from the top of tall buildings. Mr May says, agreed, although he makes a point about that doesn't necessarily mean 360-degree views, and you've got to consider it against other policy objectives, and we have no quarrel with that. And there is no dispute, of course, but that an art gallery is a suitable use for this particular location. So what, I ask rhetorically, is objectionable about a viewing gallery on the top of the Tate? What makes that a use, that is, the use of a viewing gallery, of a viewing gallery, not a necessary use? And it's a very far cry indeed, as Mr Justice Mann remarked, with introducing a noisy, smoke-emitting foundry into the middle of this non-industrial locale. So, my lords, in my submission, this court should find that the use of the viewing gallery was necessary if we are into the realms of nuisance, in just the same way as use by the appellants of their flats for residential purposes is necessary. My lords, the importance of the locality principle, I won't develop that. I've got nothing to add to what is said in paragraphs 120 to 123. The judge correctly took locality into account in considering whether there was a nuisance and the Court of Appeal did not disagree with that. So I move on then to reasonable precautions and the determination whether an interference is unreasonable. And this is paragraphs 124 to 133. So the question here, according to the orthodox approach drawn from Barr and Biffa, is what degree of discomfort would it be reasonable to expect a claimant to put up with? And the judge's approach here was not, as it's been characterised by London Friends, to determine simply whether the Tate's use of its viewing gallery was reasonable. Instead, he applied the orthodox Bamford test, applying the accepted nostrums of give and take. What should the appellants have had to put up with? And give and take really has not had any role to play in London Friend, Mr Weeks's submissions. There is certainly no sign of give and take at all on the part of the appellants. They all appeared before Mr Justice Mann refusing to accept that they should have to put up net curtains or blinds. And by contrast, the Tate's position has been to confine its viewing hours, to employ a security guard with instructions to people not to take photographs or film, and to limit the undoubtedly very lucrative commercial activity that could be carried on at Tate Modern. There are plenty of give and take on the part of the Tate, none whatsoever on the part of the appellants. And we say, my lords, this is a more general principle, there is no logical reason to limit the requirement to adopt reasonable ameliorative measures. There's a principle which applies only to a defendant. And your lordships will recall my making a bit of the decision in that New Zealand case about the sun dazzle, where the ultimate remedy ordered by the court was that the claimants themselves should put up blinds. And that has, I say, instructive parallels for this case.
That's a decision against you at this stage, though, because the New Zealand judge held that it was no answer to say that they could put up blinds if they didn't like the sun blazing in their windows. He found it was a nuisance.
Oh, my lords, he found it was a nuisance, but he said...
I realise at the remedy stage, different things come into play, such as what it's going to cost in that case. He also said that they could have put up with, I think, with the sun glaring in for some time of the day, but not for as long as it was, and that, as it were, the only other solution would be to replace all the cladding on the building at massive expense, which would also be an overkill because it would give them more than they were entitled to.
Yes, I accept, my lordship.
So those sort of considerations you can take into account at that stage.
Yes.
But at the liability stage, it's a case against you.
Yes.
And is there any case in which it's been held at the liability stage that it's relevant to say that if the claimant doesn't like it, he can put the curtains up or something similar?
Well, my lord, I'm not aware of one, but the point that I make is that in considering give and take, one looks to see what the claimants could reasonably do and not merely what the defendant should reasonably do.
Isn't the principle, rather, that, I think in the Scottish case that is cited in the appellants' case, that the claimant shouldn't have to, if a nuisance is being caused, do something that inhibits their use of their own property, like having curtains up for seven hours a day?
Well, my lord, one has to look at all the circumstances of the case to take into account the fact that the winter gardens were not designed to be part of the living And then it's just down to a question of, when looking at the reasonable give-and-take test, whether what's being done is something that increases the propensity to nuisance, whether it's something that could be easily guarded against. It's difficult to see, my lord, why that's not within, not within the test propounded in Bamford. And, my lord, I don't treat this as purely a matter that comes in to the consideration of what mitigation could have been carried out, but instead at the level whether there is a nuisance at all in this case.
I'm rather reminded of a hotel I once stayed in, which was a glass box, the suite with a glass box, and the bath was immediately adjacent to one of these glass walls. And if I had chosen not to draw the net curtain when I wanted to have a bath, I couldn't really complain about the intrusion that people were viewing me from the nearest building. And I'd be creating, effectively, I'd not only be creating the attraction that might draw people to have a look, but also choosing to expose myself to that kind of intrusion.
Well, my lord, with respect, I entirely agree. My lord, perhaps on a less dramatic level, London Friend yesterday said, well, Tate is one thing, but of course, many people live on public roads with their houses right up against the pavement. And they would not expect people passing by to stop and take photographs. Well, I'm not sure that's right in this age. If they choose not to have net curtains, and of course, most people do if they live in those circumstances, even at ground level, if they choose to live like that, then I would not be surprised if passersby at this stage did stop to take a photograph, if, to take your lordship's example, they were bathing in a tin bath in their front room. Standards have very much changed, standards of behaviour. And of course, 30 years ago, one didn't have a mobile phone to take pictures with in the first place.
Well, John saw an analogy with the Victorian case about the premises that were producing with its particularly sensitive form of paper, and which made, by virtue of the activity being carried on there, was particularly susceptible to deleterious consequences of ordinary activities in the vicinity. Or we had the case about the, which failed on the facts, but well, the argument was that the building was so decrepit that it was exceptionally sensitive to vibration from the power driving.
Yes, so your lordship's first example was Robinson and Kilvert and Brown Paper Manufacturing.
Yeah.
And yes, the heat rising from the defendant's floor below would not have made any difference to ordinary paper. It was brown paper that was caused to curl up by the heat. So yes, I come on to sensitive buildings and sensitive use a little further on. In fact, I'm just about to come to it, my lord. Perhaps I can deal with it now.
Yes, certainly.
So that case, Robinson and Kilvert, I don't think I need to take your lordships to, but it's in the bundle, is authority for the proposition that a man who carries on an exceptionally delicate trade cannot complain because he's injured by his neighbour doing something lawful on his property if it is something which wouldn't injure anything but an exceptionally delicate trade. Now, that's a case of sensitive use. And Mr Justice Mann sought an objection to translating the sensible, the sensitive use principle into a sensitive building context. And the Court of Appeal didn't agree with that. They said that sensitive use applies only to the use of, sorry, the principle of sensitivity applies only to the sensitivity of the claimant or the sensitivity of the claimant's use of its property, and not to any sensitivity arising because of the particular use of the property in a particular physical state. We say that's wrong, my lords, and perhaps I can cite now an authority of fairly recent vintage from the Court of Appeal in a case called Hiros.
I'm sorry, which paragraph?
Just finding it.
In the Court of Appeal, are you now?
So London Friends note, it's tab 41, bundle four, and it's 1545 is where it starts.
Yes, and I'm sorry, my question was, you're criticising the Court of Appeal, and I just wonder which paragraph we should, in the Court of Appeal's judgment, we should be looking at?
Yes, my lord, that will be attended to, and I'll come back to your lordships later. I'm sorry, I don't have it at my fingertips. If I can just proceed with Hiros while that's being done. So these were industrial buildings which were in focus, and I turn to the headnote at 1545. The claimant Hiros was the lessee of unit 22 in the Crown Hill Industrial Estate, been there since 1993, manufactured parts for mobile phones and so on. Three lines down, the defendant Peak was the lessee of the neighbouring premises. It manufactured food additives and coatings. From the beginning of Peak's occupation, Hiros had complained of strong and pervasive smells, verisimely referred to as spicy, peppery or light curry or garlic, causing a nuisance at its premises and injury to the health of its employees. Odors had been escaping from unit 20 to unit 22 through the porous breeze block party wall. Claimant brought proceedings against Peak, and the issue in the case is whether the smells amounted to a nuisance in law, taking into account the nature of the neighbourhood. And the passage in the Court of Appeal in this case, to answer my Lord, Lord Sales' question, occurs in 98 and 99.
Yes, thank you.
Page 182H. So those were the facts, and then turning to the analysis at page 1564. And this is at first instance for the moment. The deputy judge says in paragraph 113, halfway down, Mr Holland submitted that it could not be a defence to a claim in nuisance, that otherwise actionable discomfort caused by a defendant would not have been caused if the premises had been constructed differently. This seems to me to beg the question, which is, as Sir Andrew Morrit indicated in Watson, whether the defendant's use of the premises he occupies is reasonable in the sense explained by Lord Millet. That is, taking into account the defendant's requirements as well as the claimant's comfort. The fact that it causes discomfort is not conclusive. And then he comes to his conclusions on liability in the next paragraph. I've concluded that Hiros's case is not made out for the following main reasons. First, the character of the neighbourhood was that of a light industrial estate and so on. Secondly, I do not consider that the odours reaching unit 20 amounted to a nuisance on a light industrial estate as opposed to in a residential area, having taken into account all the evidence as to its frequency and intensity and effect. The degree of interference was insufficient. Third, I agree with the opinion of Mr Pearson, and I'm struck by his observations, that the occupier of a unit on a light industrial estate must expect the possibility of disagreeable smells. And fourth, I do not think that there is anything unreasonable in Mr Peak's use, oh, sorry, in Peak's use of unit 22, it carries out normal operations of the kind which are not out of place on a light industrial estate, and there is nothing unreasonable about the manner in which these operations are carried out. And then the significant part comes on the next page, paragraph 115. There is, in my view, an analogy with the London Borough's Southwark case. The root of the difficulties in this case is, again, the inadequate protection afforded by the party wall between units 20 and 22. It is not right to say that the ordinary use of industrial premises cannot constitute nuisance, but I have found that Peak's use of its premises was reasonable, taking into account the interests of both parties. That being so, I do not think that the reasonable user by an occupier of industrial premises on an industrial estate becomes a nuisance because of inadequacies in the party wall dividing its premises from its neighbour for which it is not responsible. As I've explained earlier, these could have been wholly or largely cured from either side. Hiros's attitude throughout has been that it was for Peak which caused the discomfort to its employees, either to take the necessary steps to alleviate it or to cease production. But in my view, the risk of such discomfort was inherent in leasing premises of this kind, and it was for Hiros to do whatever was necessary to look after its employees. Now, my lords, I know that it is perhaps a further, a far reach from acts like that to this case, but I see the principle, I say the principle that can be extricated from that is of even application. If you occupy a building which is sensitive in one way or another, that is to say, a building which would not lead to the intrusion that a quote's ordinary building would be subject to, then the occupant of that building must, using the principle of give and take, take its own preventive measures, just as in Hiros, it was up to either party to do something about the defective party wall.
What do you say about Mr Justice Asbury in Horan MacAlpine and Old Buildings? Are old buildings particularly susceptible?
Yes. My lord, I do have an answer to that, but I'll need to take a little time refreshing my memory of what it is. Would you, lordship, indulge me if I come back a little later on that?
Thank you.
So that's Robinson and Kilvert, and then the Court of Appeal in Hiros, sorry, I should have said that Court of Appeal agreed with the judge's analysis. Can I shore up this point by reference next to the current edition, I think, of Winfield and Jolovitz on Taut, Professors Gaudkamp and Nolan, where they say in round terms that the objective principle also extends the physical make-up of buildings and other fixtures on the claimant's land? And then my third supportive point comes from Southwark and Tanner itself, and the reason that the claimants failed in Southwark and Tanner... And the reason that the claimants failed in Southwark and Tanner was because they lived in defective buildings without sound insulation. So drawing those points together and deciding whether a nuisance exists, the court looks, is able to look at the sensitivity of the claimant's building. And the courts did not, in that case, Southwark, allow the claimants to impose a greater burden on the defendant just because they were occupying a sensitive building. And I say, in this case, it's entirely right that the occupiers of these glass wall flats should not be allowed to impose a really quite significantly expensive solution against Tate's will just because they want to keep their outward view, living in their glass wall flats. My lords, I'm
If I'm in Southwark, what the House of Lords decided was that the reason why the sensitivity of the building was relevant was because the defendants were only doing what anybody would ordinarily do on the property.
Yes, well, I say it's no different in this case, my lord, with the viewing gallery.
Well, I appreciate that's one of your submissions. But do you say that if the viewing gallery is not an ordinary use of the property, nevertheless, sensitivity is, that the construction of the building is relevant?
I don't, my lord. My lords, I'm up to page, to paragraph one hundred and forty-four of my case. And there we cite again from Professor Lowland's article, Nuisance and Privacy in two thousand and twenty-one, written in the light of the Court of Appeal's decision in this case. He comments, and I'm reading from one hundred and forty-four, which is page one hundred and fifty. The fact that the design layout, et cetera, of the claimant's property makes it unusually sensitive to a particular form of interference should be a relevant consideration when assessing whether a given instance of such interference is actionable in nuisance. Suppose, for example, that in the Three Little Pigs fairy tale, the threat to the houses of the little pigs had come from vibrations generated by a nearby factory rather than the big bad wolf. Would not their choice of construction materials, straw, sticks and bricks, have been highly pertinent in subsequent nuisance litigation? If so, then why not also the design of a luxury block of flats in which the price the occupiers pay for their magnificent views is a heightened level of exposure to the onlooker's gaze? And so, my lords, a little flippant admittedly, but in the course of our arguments before Mr. Justice Mann, the comparator that was used was, well, if I choose to live in a tent next door to a very noisy activity, I can hardly complain that I'm suffering a nuisance from noise. If had I been living in a house instead of a tent, I would not have been subject to the same annoyance. And I say the same principle translates directly to the way in which the flats are used without any form of protection. And that's all the more so because, as originally designed, of course, these flats would have had a lot more protection, and the developer, for reasons better known to it, chose to omit much of that protection. So at trial, our submissions were that the intended privacy features in the form of these louvers would have minimized the opportunity for views of the flat interiors to the point where no nuisance would have arisen. And we said it was, would be wrong to visit the consequences of the developer's decision to remove the privacy features on the Tate. And the judge effectively accepted that submission. He did it in a way that involved him constructing a hypothetical building with more wall and less window, but effectively he was just adopting his own interpretation of the submission that we'd made. And had that been done, then the outside view would not have been attracted in the same way. Difficult to fault the logic. The judge, after all, had been to the viewing gallery. He had noted the obvious thing, that a major part of what catches the eye was the apparently clear and uninterrupted view along the southern side of the viewing gallery of the interior of the flats. And that's what attracts the gaze which offends privacy. But if there had been breaks in that view, which is what the developer had been meant to do, then it wouldn't have been the same. The visual interest would be less continuous and less striking. There'd still be a risk of intrusion into privacy from the viewing gallery, but a level, at a level, as the judge held, which would have been well within what the modern flat dweller ought to put up with in this locality.
Could I just ask you, do you say that the striking architectural design of the flats is itself a matter which contributes to sensitivity? Something which attracts the gaze of an observer?
Very much so, my lord. One need only look at the Instagram post to see that many of them must be architectural students. They all come to look at Richard Rogers' design. I'm saying, it's just not right to form the conclusion from the dozens of photographs which are taken that everybody's photographing the interior, that the comments on social media are mainly about the form of the building. So yes, that certainly, this is not a block of flats that would be photographed less if activity within was not being carried on. And so there was nothing to draw the interest within. People would still be taking photographs purely of the building. Indeed, on the evidence, quite a lot of them were, judging by their comments. Very, very few commented about the activity going on within. So if my friends are right in the remedy, they seek an injunction to wall off the southern and half the western sides of the building, you'd be denying this resource to an awful lot of people who are very, very interested in architecture or just the beauty of looking at a Richard Rogers-designed building for the general population. And how can that be right, just to protect the immunity of a few people? A few people who don't want to put up net curtains? I hope that answers some lordship's question. So lords, we commend to your lordships the approach of Mr. Justice Mann. The way in which he worded his alternative hypothesis may not precisely have followed the line that I advocated to him, but nevertheless, it was one rooted in authority. So my lords, I think that's the point at which I would like to hand over to Ms. McCulgan, if that's a course which is convenient to your lordships. And I can deal, I think, with my Lord Lloyd Jones's question about Horne and McAlpine, the vulnerable building case. So this was a physical damage case, nothing to do with locality. And we deal with this in paragraph one hundred and thirty of our, I see. Yes. If I can take your lordship to page eight hundred and thirty-two, your lordship finds the decision of Mr. Justice Asbury.
Sorry, the page eight three two?
Eight three two. So picking up the judgment at the bottom of page eight three two, last four lines, he says, the following proposition is sought to be established from these passages. A man cannot limit the operations of his neighbour on his own land or increase his neighbour's liability by putting his property for his own purposes into a structural condition in which it is more than ordinarily liable to be affected by that neighbour's legitimate operations. In some cases, he says, this may be accurate, and that's our case. As applied to the present case, it is, in my judgment, inappropriate, and the analogy of contributory negligence does not apply. So my lords, we endorse that approach. As it happened, in the circumstances of that particular case on those facts, the judge held that it did not apply, but he did not reject the proposition that it could never apply. So the reason it was inappropriate in that case simply was because the evidence didn't support it, and one sees that from lower down, page eight three three. Because as a matter of fact, the judge came to the conclusion that what the defendants had said, namely that the building was in a delicate and fastidious condition, was simply no justification for its being physically shaking and shaken in its declining years. So they, as a matter of fact, the judge rejected the proposition that the building was in that condition anyway. So my lords, I draw from that a principle which supports me, namely that in some circumstances, the fact that a building is in a structural condition which makes it more than ordinarily liable to be affected by operations next door is a relevant circumstance. I hope that deals with lordship's question.
Thank you.
Yes, well, I think we are perhaps ready then to hear from Mr. McCulgan. Thank you very much, Mr. Ferguson. Yes, Mr. McCulgan.
I'm dealing with part two, subsection three of the respondent's case, which is that English legislation should not be changed to accommodate human rights to privacy, and that's at paragraphs seventy-six and following of the respondent's case. And I say the first thing that needs to be emphasized is the clear finding that, made by Mr. Justice Mann, that there was no reasonable expectation of privacy on the facts of this case. That being the case, there was no breach of Article eight. Now, if the defendants, if the appellants are to rely on section six of the Human Rights Act to force a development of a common law, then that has to be on the basis that there is a breach of Article eight. So if one looks at the section six, it's at tab eleven, I'll give you the eleven is page seven one five. And section six itself is at seven one seven of the bundle. And section six one says, it's unlawful for public act to, public authority to act in a way which is incompatible with a convention right. So insofar as that may impose an obligation on the court, that obligation has to rely on the fact that otherwise there would be a breach of a convention right. Now, the Court of Appeal was critical of Mr. Justice Mann's approach, but did not criticize his conclusion that the appellants did not have a reasonable expectation of privacy. And in my submission, it's clear, in view of the comments made by Mr. Justice Mann at paragraphs one nine six and following, that's at page two three zero. It's clear that Mr. Justice Mann had in mind the approach of the Supreme Court in Inre JR thirty-eight, which is at one six seven three and following of the bundle. So what the Supreme Court said in the JR case, and it's Lord Just, Lord Tullson, at page one seven oh eight, was Lord Hodge and Lord Clark agreeing. Lord Tullson said that the test for reasonable expectation is, and I quote from his paragraph ninety-eight, "a broad one which takes account of all the circumstances of the case, including the attributes of the claimant, the nature of the activity in which the claimant was involved, the place at which it was happening, and the nature and purpose of the intrusion. The principled reason for the touchstone is that it focuses on the sensibilities of a reasonable person in the position of the person who is subject, who is the subject of the conduct complained about in considering whether the conduct falls within the sphere of Article eight." And if one looks at Mr. Justice Mann's Sorry. I do apologize.
Do you need both lexions together?
No, no, that's fine. So if one looks at Mr. Justice Mann's conclusion, sorry, his reasoning from paragraphs one nine six to two one four, he says at two one five, he reaches his conclusion on negligence, but, sorry, on nuisance. But then he goes on to conclude that for the same reasons he has found no reasonable expectation of privacy. And those reasons include factors such as, at paragraph one nine seven, the fact that it was not the defendant's purpose to allow users of the viewing platform to gaze at the claimants. At one nine eight, the fact that the defendant restricted the opening hours of the viewing gallery. At two one, two zero one, the view afforded into the appellant's living accommodation from the viewing platform arose because of the complete glass walls of the living accommodation. Those are all at two three zero J. And then at two, two three zero K and M, at paragraphs two oh three and paragraphs two ten to two eleven, he talks about the fact that the design and use of the flats made them more attractive to viewers, and also that the design and use made the inhabitants of the flat more vulnerable to the viewer's gaze, such that the claimants were occupying a particularly sensitive property which they are operating in a way that has increased the sensitivity to viewing. And then at paragraph two fourteen, also at two thirty M, he lists the steps which the claimants could have taken but did not take to reduce the exposure of which they complained. So I say that is clearly consistent with the approach in Inre J, and that Mr. Justice Mann's careful conclusion that there was no reasonable expectation of privacy is the starting point for analysis of the, of the appellant's claim.
Sorry, when you say that he refers across to those passages for the purposes of Article eight as well, which is the paragraph where he does that?
He says, classically, I've now missed my, I'll come back to that if I may.
Yeah, it's all right, thank you.
So there's, there's no finding in this case that there's a breach of Article eight. And in my submission, there is no proper basis on which it could be suggested that the European Court of Human Rights would find a breach of Article eight in this case. This is a case which requires the, which turns on the positive obligations imposed by Article eight. It's not a case in which the state has itself interfered in the appellant's private or home life. The appellant's case refers to a number of cases, including Rayner and the UK, in which the European Commission accepted that aircraft noise could interfere with Article eight. But of course, the European Commission in that case found no breach of Article eight. And that was reflected subsequently in the decision of the Grand Chamber in the Hatton and UK case. And if I can take you to that, it's at page one nine seven five of the bundle. So Hatton in the UK, a case about aircraft noise. So, Hatton and the UK, a case about aircraft noise produced by Heathrow Airport, and there were complaints about interferences with private life, including by virtue of sleep disturbance and so on. And the European Court there found no breach of Article Eight. It emphasised the broad margin of appreciation which applied, and I'll take you to, if I may, let me just... if we can start at page 2005 there, which is paragraph 120.
I'm wondering where you're going with this. Is it not clear that, as a matter of principle, photographing somebody inside their own home could be a breach of Article Eight?
Certainly photographing someone in their own home could be a breach of Article Eight. In this case, no breach of Article Eight was found. And of course, in this case, by contrast with cases such as the Murray and Express case, which was the J.K. Rowling case, or the McKennitt and Ash case, which was the Loreena McKennitt case, there was no targeted photography of anyone by virtue of their identity. In fact, there was no targeted photography posted on social media of anyone at all. I think the only person who's visible, though not recognisable, in any of the social media posts was Mr. McFagin Jr., who was photographed when he was using a long angled lens to photograph people who were looking at the flats. So, there's no targeted photography of anyone in this case. And I say the photography which is at issue here has more in common with photography of people who are walking down the street. It's not targeted. And of course, you can breach somebody's privacy, as in the Murray case, by photographing somebody as they're walking down the street. But in my submission, that would not be the case unless that photography were targeted, or unless, as in a case such as Peck, which was the attempted suicide caught by CCTV and then widely publicised. The breach of privacy there was the circumstances under which, well, the very intimate thing that was happening in the photograph that was then reproduced.
Can I just say, I'm very slightly confused about what you're telling us about the judge's judgement. I mean, you've emphasised that there was no finding of a breach of Article Eight, but isn't that because he put Article Eight to one side after he'd made his initial finding that the Tate is not a public authority to which section six applies? So, that's paragraph 126 at page 220.
Yes, my lord, I rely on paragraph 220, which is at page 230...
Right.
Sorry, 230O. And this is the assessment that is carried out, which I drew your attention to, pages, I think, paragraphs 194 and following. The assessment that I've carried out is the usual one applicable to nuisance, even if privacy protection now arises via the application of Article Eight. That article generally requires an assessment, among other things, of whether the claimant has a reasonable expectation of privacy. As stated elsewhere in this judgement, in my view, an assessment of that nature would be almost identical to the balancing exercise between the defendant's use of the land in the locale in question and the sort of give and take that would be reasonable for the claimant. It would arrive at the same result. The sort of factors which mean that the claimants cannot claim that the use of the viewing gallery is a nuisance mean they do not have a reasonable expectation of privacy, if that is relevant.
Right.
So, I rely on that.
Can I just check? Am I right in thinking that for the judge's nuisance analysis, he doesn't actually positively rely on Article Eight at all?
That is correct. He, well, he didn't refer to Article Eight in the analysis at paragraphs 197 to 215, but the conclusion that he reached in relation to his nuisance analysis, he said, was equally applicable to Article Eight. There is no reasonable expectation of privacy.
Yes, all right, thank you. But that isn't challenged on this appeal, is it? There's no privacy claim put forward. The only relevance of privacy I understood to be, an argument, I think in the alternative, that if otherwise, under ordinary principles, visual intrusion is not capable of being a nuisance, it ought to be recognised as such, because that would be in accordance with the fundamental value that is accorded to privacy of a person in their home, I thought was the argument.
Well, I think the argument shifted over the course of the claim. If it is not being argued that Article Eight is in issue, then I would say nevertheless, in the court's approach to what privacy ought to be protected, the court should take into account whether that which is being claimed would fall within Article Eight. Privacy, certainly in circumstances where we have the Human Rights Act and Article Eight is applicable in the UK, it would be an odd thing if the parameters of Article Eight weren't taken into account in determining what privacy is for the purposes of any development of the common law.
Well, it's accepted that the Tate is not a public authority. That hasn't been challenged, so there's no pursuit of that area. And it's not suggested either that the laws of nuisance should somehow map the Article Eight test by another means. It's just argued in the same way as in Campbell, for example, that the common law should take account of the fact, in terms of the rights that are protected, of the value of privacy reflected in Article Eight.
Well, my lord, in Campbell, what happened was that the test that was previously applicable under the breach of confidence tort became recast so as to map very closely Articles Eight and Ten. And as I understand the claimant's, the appellant's case, they seek to inject into the law of nuisance a requirement to protect privacy, which in my submission must at least reflect the parameters of Article Eight rather than being entirely freewheeling. And if it is the case that what happened here would not breach Article Eight, then I say that must be relevant to this court's adjudication. Now, it is the case that the Tate is not a public authority, but the obligation, or the breach of Article Eight can be a breach by the state of a positive obligation to protect Article Eight and dealings between private actors. And insofar as the appellant's would be relying on Article Eight in this case, it would be in that way.
I think the argument you're advancing is one that I don't think Mr. Weeks has made. I think what's your... if I'm following you, what you're suggesting is that a relevant public authority under section six is the court, and section six is to be construed as imposing what's sometimes called a horizontal obligation on the court to give effect to Article Eight. But I don't think that's quite how Mr. Weeks has put his case. As I understand the way he's put it, it's simply that regardless of the Human Rights Act, the international obligations which the UK has undertaken by entering into the ECHR are relevant to, or at any rate should be taken into account by the court when considering the development of a common law. And if, contrary to his submission, the common law hasn't previously protected against visual intrusions, then that's a step which the court... a development of a common law which the court should be willing to undertake, having regard amongst other factors, well, one factor is developments elsewhere in the common law world, which is why we've looked at Australia and New Zealand and Canada, and another is the UK's obligations under the ECHR. If I... Yes, that's the argument that you have to meet.
Well, my lord, in any case, in either case, it must be relevant to ask then, what are the parameters of privacy which the UK has undertaken to protect by virtue of its obligations under the ECHR? And that's why, however one gets to the analysis, Article Eight, what Article Eight means, it matters. So, if one looks at the Hatton case, and I'm looking at page 2005, paragraph 120, the court there emphasises that in previous cases, I should say, this was a noise case, so an environmental case, the court notes at the outset that in previous cases in which environmental questions gave rise to violations of the convention, the violation was predicated on a failure by the national authorities to comply with some aspect of the domestic regime. Thus, in Lopez Ostra, the waste treatment plant at issue was illegal in that it operated without the necessary licence, and it was eventually closed down. That was an environmental pollution case arising from a waste treatment plant. In Garra Tu, which was similar, the violation was founded on an irregular position at the domestic level, as the applicants had been unable to obtain information that the state was under a statutory obligation to provide. And then it goes on to say that element of domestic irregularity is wholly absent in the present case. Also important, and important in the present case, is paragraph 122. The court must consider whether the government can be said to have struck a fair balance between those interests, that's the interests of Heathrow, and the conflicting interests of the persons affected by noise disturbances, including the applicants. Environmental protection should be taken into consideration by governments in acting within their margin of appreciation, and by the court in its review of that margin, but it would not be appropriate for the court to adopt a special approach in this respect by reference to a special status of environmental human rights. So, the first question for the court to look at is whether the government struck a fair balance in the way in which it holds the ring between competing interests. And then I'd ask you also to read paragraph 123. And I'd emphasise the last sentence of that. Whilst the state is required to give due consideration to particular interests, the respect for which it is obliged to secure by virtue of Article Eight, it must in principle be left a choice between different ways and means of meeting this obligation. The court's supervisory function being of subsidiary nature, it's limited to reviewing whether or not the particular solution adopted can be regarded as striking a fair balance. And that is, the analysis continues at page 2007, paragraph 127. A further relevant factor in assessing whether the right balance has been struck is the availability of measures to mitigate the effects of aircraft noise generally, including night noise. A number of measures are referred to above. The court also notes that the applicants do not contest the substance of the government's claim that house prices in the areas in which they live have not been adversely affected by the night noise. The court considers it reasonable in determining the impact of a general policy on individuals in a particular area to take into account the individual's ability to leave the area. Where a limited number of people in an area, two to three per cent of the effective population, according to the 1992 sleep study, are particularly affected by a general measure, the fact that they can, if they choose, move elsewhere without financial loss must be significant to the overall reasonableness of the general measure. And I say, in this case, those factors matter. The ring is held between developers and other users of land by the planning system. That's what the state has put in place to control it. And the fact that an individual is discomposed by the degree of scrutiny of their flat does not itself indicate any infringement of Article Eight. Now, and importantly, and I have not found anything subsequent to this to contradict it, at this point, no environmental Article Eight claim had been successful unless the government itself had failed to deliver its own rules, as it were. So, there are environmental cases where the government had imposed regulations and then not applied them, but whereas here, a system had been put in place, the margin of appreciation is hostile to a conclusion that Article Eight has been breached. Now, and that point is well made, actually, in the bundle by Don O'Nolan's article, which is in... it starts at 2304, at tab 67, and at 2308 to 2312.
Just to be clear, I think this is a different article from the one that we were looking at before.
That's correct. This is the original Nolan article that Malernad Brand relied on in his skeleton. But I'm pointing you to that simply because there, Nolan elaborates on the point about... and he cites somebody else, Tom Allen, who said in 2005...
I'm so sorry, because I was just checking that. What's the page that you want us to look at?
Well, I'm referring to you generally, but the analysis is at 2308 and following, where Nolan makes the point about the way, the type of cases in which Article Eight has been breached by what might be regarded as environmental interference, and that includes cases such as Hatton itself. And then, if I can turn you to page 2312, Nolan quotes Tom Allen in a book, Property in the Human Rights Act, and he says, these findings of Article Eight breaches are generally only found where the state has adopted... As Tom Allen points out, it remains the case that the court is reluctant to intervene in cases where the state has adopted and adhered to a regulatory regime, which may involve intrusion on some interests, so that the strongest cases are those where the individual is only seeking the enforcement of existing laws in respect of a clear default. So...
If I may say so, like my Lord Lord Reid, I'm just a little bit unclear where this argument is tending, because the judge puts to one side what might be the analysis if the Tate had been a public authority, and he specifically says, "I'm not going to make any findings about that" because they're not. There would, in some cases, be scope for saying that the court's the public authority for the purposes of section six of the Human Rights Act, but the judge didn't go through that analysis, nor did the court of appeal, and I'm not sure that Mr. Weeks has invited us to go down that route, because that would involve other questions. Specifically, one would then be looking to see to what extent Article Eight imposes positive obligations on the state, because the court then is seeking to hold the ring, as you've put it, between two private persons. And so far as that's concerned, there would be a range of issues about the width of the margin of appreciation, which tends to get wider when you're dealing with positive obligations, and also tends to get wider if the state is seeking to balance convention rights on both sides, which they would be here because Article One and Protocol One would give rights to the Tate as well. But, I mean, none of that was addressed in the judgements below. I'm not sure that you're addressing us on that, are you, or are you?
Well, I think, my lord, it's fair to say that the appellant's case has shifted somewhat over time, and the Court of Appeal was confronted with an Article Eight argument before it that had not in fact been given permission. that had not in fact been given permission. So the Court of Appeal looked at the Article Eight points and at paragraphs 92 to 94, Well, from, in fact, 182F and following, addressed the significance of Article Eight. So Article Eight found its way into the Court of Appeal decision, and the Court of Appeal at 87 suggested that there was a number of errors of principle in a way that the judge approached the issue of the relevance of Article Eight. And they say, in principle, that analysis should have been to ask whether, if the tort of nuisance does not extend at common law to overlooking, it nevertheless should in this case, to summarise that. And then at 89, he says...
Sorry, just on 88. I think that's the Court of Appeal making the point that I was just putting to you, that in theory, one could have a case where one says to the court, you're a public authority, see Section Six Three of the Human Rights Act, you have a duty now to do something to protect Article Eight rights. But the Court of Appeal says that the judge didn't go down that route. And I'm not sure Mr Weeks is going down that route.
It may be that I can sit down, my lord, and I'm very happy to do so. What I don't want to risk is a finding that in order to comply with its obligations under Section Six, the court would have to develop common law in a way that would deliver protection for Article Eight rights should those rights be violated. And I say the Court of Appeal was completely right in its response to that, which is at 86 and following. And for the reasons that the Court of Appeal gave there, that's not something that is at issue in this case.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, the Court of Appeal's analysis suffers from the same problem at this point, as of the common law. At paragraph 90, it treats this as an overlooking case, mere overlooking, and says, always there's been a Strasbourg case about that. And you're taking us to a discussion of Strasbourg cases about environmental issues. I mean, insofar as Article Eight might be of any relevance, it's really the cases about photography, which are mostly to do with paparazzi, and whether that sort, the sort of, whether those cases provide a basis for regarding what's been going on, or what's alleged to have been going on in this case, as also falling within the scope of Article Eight.
My lord, if you would like, would address you on that, I'm very happy to do so.
Well, we're a little bit past one o'clock. Perhaps if we were to adjourn just now, that could give you an opportunity over the adjournment to consider how best you can assist us.
Thank you.